It was in Brent, right?
Yeah. We're glad we joined.
What's your name?
Aaron, it sounds like you're calling Ryan.
I think he's on vacation.
Yeah. He's standing there talking to him. Now you come here on vacation.
Lucas is really... I mean, he's really... I feel like I'm blowing my mind.
You do. You have arms.
Yeah, but like, I realize I couldn't, like...
I did turn some arms. I'm good. Okay, thank you. Well, see you later. Well, see you later. Nice. Big help, big help, son. We don't go.
This is gonna get so weird.
He's having a chicken stew.
He brings more snacks, I think.
He's bringing snacks. You really are.
This is the best opportunity to do the pledge.
It's recorded, you can be on TV. We don't order out of the newspaper, so you won't be in the newspaper anymore.
All right, at seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge.
The president is to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Perschmann?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Mack. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Community comments. Presenters are welcome to address the council for matters relevant to the city of Carver's authority for up to five minutes on matters not listed on tonight's meeting agenda. Specific requests for information may not be immediately available, in which case follow up with the presenter some... Uh, we will follow up with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act on requests. However, they will follow up accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. Sounds like we have a couple of young gentlemen here. Come on. We got a long agenda, let's go. Okay. Yeah, the green light's on, right?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, so you can say your names.
Hi, I'm Luke.
Hi, I'm Luke.
Okay. And where do you live?
I live in Mapple Grove.
Same.
Okay. And what are you here to address the council that's completely relevant and professional and adult-like? Uh, I just wanted to say that my ma... That the mayor of Carver is my aunt, and she is amazing. And tonight, I wanted to come down here to thank her because she's such an amazing aunt.
And she actually took us mini golfing today. And I just want to say I love you, baby cakes.
But wait, can you do it? Do it.
Baby cakes.
Thank you. Thanks, baby. You made my day. Love you. Thank you. Oh, okay. And they're off.
With the baseball.
I didn't think he'd emote, I didn't think I'd emote. All right. Presentations and reports, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and remove item 7.8. And that is the accepting the donation from the Carver Lions.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion.
Well, second.
Thank you. Um, and a second by Councilmember Perschmann. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Seven point five.
Uh, eight.
Sorry, eight.
Yeah, sure, I just wanted, you know, when we get donations, uh, to the city, I think it's always nice to recognize when, um, when that happens. And the Carver Lions have donated to the fire department $8,000 so that they can put that towards their dress uniforms. Uh, the Carver Lions recognize that, um, when we're a smaller city and we're looking to fund what is needed for the fire department, that, uh, there's obviously a long list and maybe dress uniforms don't always make it to the top. But considering the number of things that have happened over the past year or two that, um, those dress uniforms unfortunately have become more necessary. So, the Carver Lions, we're happy to donate that. I just wanted to say thank you to them because I think it's important to acknowledge some of those donations.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.8 from the consent agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Mack.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Welsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Um, moving right along. Eight point one, the Wickenhauser and Eastern Carver Schools petition for annexation.
Thank you. I'm gonna let my screen come up. I have quite the marathon tonight, I haven't done this in a while.
I know, we're excited for the Aaron Smith Show. I'm excited for the Aaron Smith Show.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'll just start talking. We'll get the picture in a second. There it is. There, we just had to start. All righty, like you mentioned, we are considering tonight annexation of roughly seventy-eight acres of property that is currently northeast of current city limits. So to get your bearings a bit, we are north of 212. I've labeled Fleet Farm and Lakeview Industries. So formerly, this was a property owned by Joe Wickenhauser. So we've called it the Wickenhauser for decades. Uh, but they are interested in annexation at this time. The property address is 12120 Jonathan Carver Parkway. So a little bit about annexation, the process, how we get here. The city has an orderly annexation agreement with all of our township. It lays out pretty much the rules of the road. It tells us when we need to communicate, how often, fees that are required, who we should be sending information to. So within the orderly annexation agreement, we get kind of our roadmap of how annexation needs to work, the boxes we need to check. So property owners make petition for application to the city. The city never goes out and says, hey, we're ready for you, come into the city now. It's run by a property owner or developer, depending on the situation. Tonight, it's a co-application by the Wickenhauser family and the school district, so I'll talk a little bit about that later. The city and township coordinate on the application. So Mary Olson is the township clerk. I give her a heads up typically when I know an annexation is coming just so they can start getting it on their radar. We coordinate on things like fees, so the township gets a fee in lieu of tax lost. I answer any questions, like what will this develop as for the township board? And then the township has thirty days to review. So no matter what, the day they get my letter saying we have this active application, they have thirty days to review it. They're also able to waive that period if they have a township board meeting, there's no questions, et cetera. So once those thirty days have lapsed, it comes to the city council. So it happened to be this meeting was the next available agenda. So at this point, you may review the application knowing that the township has already completed their review. And if you move forward with the application, it's then made to the Office of Administrative Hearings, which always feels very fancy to say. So again, it's roughly, uh, seventy-eight acres. Development access into the site primarily will be from Commerce Drive, which was a street that was constructed in conjunction with Lakeview Industries. And there's a potential connection to JCP at some point in the future. We're not contemplating that right now. We need to coordinate with the city of Chaska and Carver County about where that access might line up. So the, uh, the east side of the road is Chaska. The west side will be Carver. So we'll need to coordinate together to make sure that we line up probably to a shared access, so it's not staggered. The county probably wouldn't allow that to happen. And it likely will be development-driven, so Carver is in this area first. So we are... This is gonna be a bad pun, but kind of driving the bus on this side of the road.
Brent is rubbing off on you.
Yeah, I know.
I like that.
Leaving the charge.
So mentioning, uh, bus. The school district is working on an application right now for the twenty... The southern twenty acres on this site for the transportation facility for the district. So tonight, we're not contemplating that at all. It's just annexation into city limits.
Quick question, just because I don't know.
Yeah.
So we can annex a parcel of land that is not surrounded within city limits?
So it needs to be adjacent to city limits somehow. So we, uh, Lakeview, this whole site is in city limits.
Okay.
So we match it here on the other side of Commerce.
Gotcha, thanks.
Yeah.
I have a clarifying question too. So seventy-eight acres is the size of the property? But it's just twenty acres for the proposed district?
Potentially, yes. We don't have an active application from the school district, but we know that they're working with the Wickenhauser family on the southern twenty acres for a site for them potentially.
So do we know what happens to the other?
Not at this time, no.
But it would be annexed?
Correct.
For this process?
Yes. Okay. So the city's comprehensive plan obviously has this as part of our annexation area. So for those new to this map, the dotted line are current dish, city limits. We obviously have annexed Timber Creek and Meridian Fields and the Preserve since our comp plan. So our, uh, line moves a little bit further west on the southern side of 212. But the area that is colored on the map is eventual city boundary for the city of Carver. So we obviously have a large growth area. So you can see in the red circle, that's the Wickenhauser piece. We have a guided purple, which is a commercial industrial mix in our comprehensive plan. Here's the survey that was submitted. Not the most glamorous document, but very important to me and Dave to get the annexation in with a legal description, et cetera. So again, the annexation application does not contemplate an end user. We know the school district is working on a piece, but that is not part of the discussion tonight. Uh, should a project come in on an application, there's going to be several processes that will be required. So first would be like a concept plan, so an idea of what something might be. And then a comprehensive plan amendment is going to be required because the property was an ag preserve at the time of the comprehensive plan. So we can't change that, no matter what. If a property is an ag preserve, it requires a comp plan amendment. So a process we'd run with the Met Council. Uh, we've done a couple of them. They're not terribly hard, but they are terribly long. So we are really upfront with anyone who's looking at this piece of property that it will likely be a little bit of a marathon to get through that comp plan amendment process based on the requirement of some adjacent community review. They have about six months to review the comp plan amendment, so it takes a while.
Uh, can the ag preserve, is that held in federal state? Where's?
County.
It's just county?
Correct.
And so is it, was there a time limit on that?
Yes, but that can change if the person who entered it in the ag preserve passes away or sells the property.
Okay.
So then we'd go through typical plating, preliminary and final plat. Rezoning would be required because any property that is annexed into the city goes default to ag. So we would need to do a rezoning and then potentially a PCD, depending on who the end user is. So again, we're anticipating an application from Eastern Carver County Schools. We don't have one right now, but they're potentially developing the southernmost twenty acres for a transportation facility. I will take any questions.
Questions?
I have two. Uh, so the, the first one is, um, so now that we've annexed up to County Road 40 and more of County Road 11, do we have any different requirements with the county on maintenance or any of those types of things? Or even on that Creek Ridge Lane with the township? Or are they still outside the city boundary?
So Creek Ridge Lane will continue to be in the county, or, yeah, in the t... In the county at this time.
County, okay.
They have, the county does maintenance of JCP. We'd be responsible for Commerce Drive, that extension.
Okay, only the bottom section there.
Correct.
Okay. And then, um, once we've annexed it, they can't change their mind, right? It's part of Carver?
I don't know. Dave, can you go?
No.
Can you do a take back on the annexation?
Right, since we don't...
I've never seen that happen. I, there's probably a way for someone to jump through eight million hoops and everyone to be okay with it, but I highly doubt that would be very easily possible for them.
Sure, okay.
Kind of like a bell they can't really unring once they come into the city limits.
Exactly, okay.
I have one question. And so it, oops. Okay, so the, we talked about the address. So the access is from Commerce Drive, but it's saying that the address is Jonathan Carver Parkway. Will that address then change to Commerce Drive?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, because we, if there's no access onto the Parkway?
Correct. So once a project is through final plat, I work with the post office in Carver County to reassign a new address.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Any questions, comments down here?
No.
Nope. I do not have any either. So I will make a motion of Doc Resolution 125-24 approving the annexation of property in ordinance with orderly annexation agreement 1428.
I'll second. By Johnson. Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Um, item number two in the Aaron Smith Show this evening is the United Properties Concept Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we have two concept plans that are... I'm going to ask that you try to keep them as, as separate as possible. So I'm going to keep reminding you of that, that it's two separate applications. So first on our docket is the concept plan for United Properties. Tom is here. I'll have him come up during our discussion if you have specific questions for United Properties. Uh, for some context of where we are, we're at the corner of Highway 212 and Jonathan Carver Parkway. So you can see Quick Trip there. Next steps, if we had a more updated map, we would see the Hometown Bank and Milk-a-Monkey. But right at that corner of 212 and JCP called Carver Commons. So where we are in the grand scheming journey is that we're at the concept plan. So it's just an idea right now. We don't know a ton of information, so you might ask some questions that we don't know the answer to. We're not being coy. We're not hiding information. We just really don't know because a lot of the process has not been defined yet. So we are at the very start of this process right at concept plan. So again, tonight, it's the United Properties application only for this first agenda item. The application includes creation of a commercial lot and the infrastructure required. It's roughly 1.75 acres. So this would create block one, lot one, along with the private streets going up to the lot and then over to JCP. So it's just the infrastructure and it's the creation of a commercial lot that could be sold. Again, it's feedback, big picture. You can ask questions and there's many unknowns. Engineering typically has not started, so we might know some information about the site, but not everything. Again, Tom is here for questions as well. In our comprehensive plan, it is commercial, which is important since this entire property is zoned right now freeway commercial. So there's been a couple of PCDs, like Next Steps required one, but the remainder of the site is freeway commercial. So it's, uh, in conjunction with our comprehensive plan, calling for commercial users on this site. So it's guided commercial, zone freeway commercial. Utilities are available via Monroe. We've been thinking about the site developing at full capacity since we began work in this area, so utilities are there and available. Something that's a little bit different about this site is that private streets... The streets are private throughout Carver Commons. So maintenance of the streets, snow plowing in that area, are done by what you could consider like a commercial HOA. And then an interesting part of this portion is that there'll be access from Monroe, but also the slip right from JCP, which I think we all have been eagerly waiting for since the County Road 11 project.
Before you flip this slide, Aaron?
Yeah.
So the commercial in the comp plan, and then you said it's zoned freeway commercial. Is there something different why it says freeway commercial? What's the difference here?
Do you want me to sell you out? That it was kind of a district that Brent made up a bunch of years ago?
For marketing purposes.
For marketing purposes, okay. So it doesn't really have a big, there's a big difference in...
No. Inherently, they are the same. Freeway commercial is the same as commercial.
Perfect.
Sounds cool.
It works.
Okay.
Many years later.
So on the screen now, you can see the survey that was submitted. So it's block one, lot one, it's creation of this lot along with the utilities. So extending north from the private street that is there and then the east-west road from the slip right. And then for some context, I've labeled Quick Trip, Next Steps and Hometown so you can get your bearings of the location.
Can, I'm sorry, can you just keep it there? So it's...
Yeah.
One-way in and then it expands to two-way so that traffic can get to those potential eventual users that are to the south of that road?
Correct. Yes, turn lanes go in there.
Thank you.
Yeah. So here it is with a survey overlaid onto the top so you can see how that road connects into the current private street and then over to JCP. You'll see the remainder of Outlet A continues to be an end user. That's undefined right now, but a large site that still remains. And then the slip right that I was mentioning, we've contemplated this for a long time. We worked with the county pretty hard on the JCP reconstruction project to allow for an additional access into the site. So you can see the curb line and the painting shows where that slip right will be. The planning commission had some good questions for Aaron at their meeting. He indicated that it will be a full turn lane, so that lane of traffic should not be impacted by people slipping right into the Carver Commons site. That was a good rhyme. So county will, uh, need to review this information, but we anticipate that this will go in without issue for that slip right. Here is a quick look at the rest of the site, just indicating what's developable, what's not. So there is a site that is directly east of Next Steps. It's about an acre. This will leave remaining site just north of Quick Trip and Hometown Bank. Block one, lot one is the site we're talking about tonight. Outlet A is a large developable site. And then Outlet B is ponding. So from my limited engineering knowledge, it sounds like everyone and their mother puts water into that pond. So it'll be for this development for the city, for the county. So it's a pretty sizable outlaw, but it's a sizable pond for many groups contributing to that pond. Okay, those are all my slides, I got a little mixed up. So again, tonight, we're just contemplating for the United Properties application, block one, lot one, and their infrastructure, so the street utilities, et cetera. Tom, do you want to come up and introduce yourself?
Be a part of the Aaron Show, I like it. Uh, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Tom Strom with United Properties. Uh, excited to carve off the puns. They just never stop, do they? Another parcel here, um, and really extend the infrastructure and streets so that we can hopefully, uh, you know, get some leasing going and continue our pursuit of bringing some commercial users. So here for any questions.
Fantastic. Questions?
I have one. So, uh, on the road going east-west, a new cutout lane. Um, so is the person purchased the property able to add on turn-in? Turn-in to their property as needed, right? Uh, you know, obviously, uh, the lot one, block one would like a turn as soon as possible and not have to go all the way down to the intersection, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We ought to review that too when we have preliminary plat and final plat just to make sure that the person could get into the site effectively so it doesn't back people up.
Exactly, meet the, to not back him to the, okay.
Correct.
Anything else?
That's all I have on that.
Chris, any future lots that come in? Are you, are these subdividing out just as needed? So as size needed, whatever, whoever's buying them wants? So that we don't have a specific, it has to be this large to hold whatever it might be?
No. And if we, if it... If it needed to be really small, I think we have a requirement in our ordinance. I can't say what it is off the top of my head, but we could do a PCD. So a planned commercial development if they needed some variation from the city code.
Okay. So when, when I'm looking at this pond, it seems like, like I said, it's a really big area that is right on that corner that can't, I guess, can't be used. There's no sliver. I mean, so the, the square that's around it, that is the, has to, that's an absolute. It has to stay where that's at.
I'm shaking my head yes, Aaron. Do you have additional feedback?
Okay.
So, can I, so for context, if I may. My predecessor, who's now retired, we bought this land twenty years ago. You had a nice stat, uh, planning committee.
Yeah, 2006.
Yes. Uh, i- in, when they put in Jonathan Carver, um, had negotiated with the county some excess area from our land that we had owned, uh, to build the pond. And then we said, we'll give you the land to build the pond so long as you upsize it for, you know, some portion of our commercial. Yeah, so that's, it is big, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Any other questions?
I know there are many other answered questions, but I don't have any to add.
Okay. Lori?
No questions.
Okay, I do not have any questions either. Let's see, it does not look like you need a motion from us on this one. So, um, I think this is fantastic. Definitely means a bunch more development if I'm in the city, basically, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Eight point three. Sorry, Les Schwab?
Les Schwab, okay.
I just figured he'll just take it from you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to give you a heads up. We have a member from Cushing Terrill who is the consultant for Les Schwab that I'm going to call in once we start discussing the information. So I suspect he's watching right now to keep track of the meeting a little bit. But then we will call in Ron and he can answer some questions about Les Schwab specific, if you have those. Tom's also here, but again, two separate applications. This looks familiar. So again, we're at the corner of 212 and JCP, Carver Commons, Quick Trip, Next Steps, Hometown, Milk-a-Monkey. And again, we're at the concept phase. So really early in the process, we don't know a ton of information, but should feedback be positive and should the applicant continue to move forward, we'll get to know more at the preliminary plat, final plat stage where we can answer some of the big questions you might have. So we just did the United Properties piece of it to create block one, lot one and the infrastructure. At this point, we are just talking about Les Schwab as an end user potentially for that site. So in the packet, there is some information about Les Schwab. It's a 10,599 square foot building of a tire brake alignment user. The site plan includes seven service bays with a bullpen of tire storage on site. We're looking for feedback, big picture comments, ask questions that you have. Again, many unknowns, but we'll start to get there if they continue to move forward with the project. This is, they were too close. That was too much. So talking about permitted users in the freeway commercial district, Les Schwab does fall within a permitted user, so it's retail sales or personal service businesses that involve repairing of automotive vehicles with, uh, 12,000 gross weight. So we've gotten the indication from Les Schwab that all the vehicles serviced on that site would be under that amount of weight. So it is a permitted user in the freeway commercial district of our adopted city code.
Talk to me about 12,000 pounds. What does that look like? Is it a, is it pickup trucks? Is it like, is it, what is it?
Our public services trucks are two-ton.
Okay.
Yeah, like the one-ton pickup is like 75,000 pounds.
Okay.
So 12,000 is pretty big.
Yeah. It's like a single axle, like...
Well, like our biggest snow plow, would we take that there to get it worked on?
Probably over 12,000 pounds.
Okay.
Thanks, I, that wouldn't have been me. So on the screen now, you can see the site plan that is on that block one, lot one that we just talked about with the United Properties. With Les Schwab, uh, layered on top, so you can see the building. The service bay is faced east, so they face the remainder of the Carver Commons sites. Uh, Meridian Fields, which is the residential user. The canopy is on the west. Obviously, access in from Monroe and that slip right. Uh, they check all the boxes for things like parking setbacks, et cetera. So at this point, they're not requesting a PCD or a planned commercial development. So no deviation from our current city code that we know right now. That could change at time of preliminary plat when we get to know the site a little bit more. But at this time, a PCD is not contemplated. Some renderings provided by Cushing Terrill, which is who Ron is with. Some renderings provided by Cushing Terrill, which is who Ron is with, so if you have questions or feedback about the building, so you can see from different elevations, depending on where you are on the site. So the front elevation, this would be if you were standing at Next Steps, looking at the building, so the top. Rear is what would be facing JCP, and then obviously the two ends. The bullpen for the trash enclosure, and then the tire enclosure, the sample fencing, and then some additional layouts of the site. So again, this is if you are traveling up or down JCP, going north or south, are the two top pictures, and then the bottom would be if you are on top of Quick Trip. The planning commission had some feedback that I'll go over, but one of them was sound, so we asked Cushing Terrill to put something together about sound. What does it sound like when the doors are open, when tires are being worked on? So they put together this diagram that shows the decibel levels at different distances, so with application to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which they have the rules and regulations about noise pollution. So residential uses is a noise area classification one, so on that table, look at one. So it goes from L10 to L50 for daytime. So 65 decibels, which is the L10, you can be at that level for 10 minutes out of every 60 minutes. 60 decibels, you can be at that for 30 minutes out of every 60, to be in compliance with the Minnesota Pollution Control Noise Ordinance. So if you look at the diagram, there we go, you can see Spring Creek Drive is at 61, so it would fall within, between those two numbers, the 60 and the 65, for noise pollution within the Minnesota Pollution Control. Ron provided some additional information about the frequency and the amount of time that like the air compressor is on for each tire. It sounds like it would be pretty brief, but I'm going to leave it at that. If you have additional questions, I'll probably defer to him once he joins the conversation.
Do we have that in our packet?
It's in there.
But it didn't show up for me.
Oh, there it is, okay. Now it's here. But not the calculation?
No, that's just from the MPCA website.
Can you go back to the table for just one second?
Yeah.
So because the numbers don't make sense, what is this, L10 and L50?
Yep.
So L10 is 10 minutes?
10 minutes out of every 60.
And L50 is 30?
Correct.
Okay. So when, when you go in between those numbers, is that a hard number? Do you land in between? Because you said the other one was at 61.
One.
So does that count towards 60, or is that, you went over 60, so now you're, you're the 65 one?
Do you know the answer to that?
Say that again, can I?
Okay, so the, where we're hitting in Spring Creek, it says 61 is the number. If we're looking at this table, you've got 65 and 60. So if you land on a number in between 65 and 60, do you automatically, is it considered you're the 65?
No. Yeah, so if you're at 61, then you cannot have, you can't exceed that for 50% of the time, because that's L50s, because it's more than, it's more than 60, but it's less than 60.
But less than 65? Okay.
And I'm sorry, it's 10%, it's not 10 minutes, so it's six minutes.
Oh, that's the L10, gotcha.
Thirty minutes an hour for L50.
Okay.
It's based on percentage of an hour.
Okay, that's what I need to know, but thank you, because I didn't know if, if you have to hit 65 to qualify in that category.
Sure.
Okay.
There is the, is this right from the MPCA's page? It has the hours as well, I mean, it is seven, 10, that's eight, that's the requirement.
This is a state statute, is there any difference in our city?
No.
Which is common, the most cities rely on the MPCA standards, and there is a provision in the MPCA rules that effectively say a city cannot allow, oh, sorry, cities aren't to allow uses that would exceed these standards, so we do have to comply with them and look at them, it's relevant, from the city's perspective, when you're looking at applications.
I'll get on sound for now.
Well, I was just saying, so this is without any sound mitigation?
Correct.
This would just be the normal?
No berm, no, just a flat open road, okay.
Correct.
I'm sorry, tell me again, one more time, how we arrived at 61 decibels being that maximum, using what, using an air wrench, using?
So this was provided by Cushing Terrill, so I'll defer to Ron when he joins the conversation for that. Okay, so some feedback from the planning commission. The first, they had some concerns about noise, that was the reason Cushing Terrill provided that exhibit that we could compare to the MPCA rules. They also had some concerns about the aesthetics along the major corridor and the current entry into the city of Carver. We all know, based on the annexation application we just saw, that won't be our eventual entrance, but it is a focal point coming into Carver off of Highway 212. They also had concerns about outdoor storage of tires and screening, understanding that tires may exceed how high the fence is, thinking about that as you're coming down Jonathan Carver Parkway, you'll be able to see that bullpen pretty clearly, since it's on the north side of the building. And they also had concerns about work being completed under the canopy, so at the time of the planning commission meeting, they discussed potentially working on things like RVs and boats under that canopy, connected with Dave and Brent, and found in our city code, that business to be conducted, all business has to be inside, there's not an exception to that, so no work could be completed under the canopy area, that would need to be moved into their facility. We shared that information with Les Schwab, Cushing Terrill on Friday. I suspect they're working on the site, thinking about it maybe differently. So we don't have an update right now, but we have shared that information with them, and that would be a requirement in our city code.
So what would they use the canopy for then? I mean, I see a trailer parked under it right now, but.
I'm not sure, the canopy might not be there.
Okay.
So depending on the feedback that they get tonight, I would say typically a concept plan of site gets reworked, so depending on the feedback that we give via the code the planning commission gives, the city council gives, we typically see an altered version the next time we see it.
Erin, and Mayor, can I jump in and ask?
You may.
Erin a question, because I think it's relevant to the discussion, too. I think you answered this question, yes, when we spoke the other day, and maybe Ron can clarify when he's on the line. Is it, is that noise, the 61 decibels, is that assuming that work is going to be happening outside or underneath the canopy?
Yes.
In other words, if code compliance is achieved and that doesn't happen, those, those decibel numbers should change significantly, I would assume.
Correct.
Is that your understanding?
Yep.
Okay.
Alrighty, so again, just a site plan. I am going to ask Brent to give you some hold music while I get Ron on the line.
Does he sing?
Sing?
I don't know, we'll have to ask.
Maybe some dad jokes.
Dad jokes?
Lamo.
Bad, bad clowns, just some.
I won't put it on speaker right away.
Oh, we're doing speaker speak, wow.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm going to put you on speaker next to a microphone.
See how it goes.
Alrighty, Ron, can you say something?
Yeah, mic check, one, two.
Everybody good?
Yes.
So Ron is with Cushing Terrill, he's working with Les Schwab, he's the consultant that put this together, so I'll open it up for discussion. Ron, do you mind just introducing yourself, talking a little bit about Cushing Terrill and Les Schwab?
Yes, I can do that. Hello, my name's Ron Isaacson with Cushing Terrill, and we're a consultant, works on Les Schwab projects. Les Schwab is a tire, brakes, you know, the tire brakes, oil changes, alignments. Les Schwab was founded in Oregon back in 1952, they've been expanding ever since. Right now, they're on a kick, where they're expanding into North Dakota and Minnesota, and currently they have quite a few projects here, and I think even some have started construction here in Minnesota. One of their main focuses, Les Schwab has, and very important to them, is customer service, and they're a promote from within focus company. This project, I'll just back up, you know, Cushing Terrill will be the architect, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, so full-service engineering consultant on this project. Will be hopefully working on a seven-day store, the seven-day full-service store with that canopy, and I'll get to that here in a minute. It's on the east side of, west side of Jonathan Carver Parkway, and a little about the grading there, contours that we've received show that site sits below the highway, so you're, as you're coming from the north, you'll be looking down at the site, so, you know, when you're over there on the east side, in the subdivision, residential subdivision, there's going to be some natural screening already provided by the highway. Les Schwab, you know, with regard to sound, it opens 6:00, their hours are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and close on Sunday, and on Saturdays, they close at 5:00 PM. Work is completed within each bay, and then the stores, they have canopies, the work's completed under the canopy. No storage outside the building, all storage is within the building on the tire racking. Deliveries occur once a week, spent tires get picked up once a week from the bullpen, and on this site, that bullpen, that, that, maybe like a metal structure, that's north of the main building, next to the trash enclosure. Tires don't get stacked higher than that, higher than the enclosure fence or screening, they're managed to a point where that does not happen. The stores are faced strategically to the west, seven days, so if you look at, there's seven sources of sound, and your parking lot sound, and the canopy's sound, so a majority of the sources of sound have been placed as far away from the houses as possible. And the site also importantly is laid out to facilitate a delivery truck to safely circulate the site. Delivery trucks, it's pretty standard policy on my Schwab project, delivery truck, for safety concerns, can't maneuver in front of the showroom, and I'll point you to the showroom on the site plan here, if you see where the ADA parking is at, that's that path from ADA parking that leads to the showroom. And the delivery trucks, they cannot drive in front of the building, because that would be too many points of possible conflict with customers. So for this site, the delivery truck will circulate around the building on the east side. You know, the building is placed in a corner lot, you know, this, you know, we understand we're next to Main Highway, there is going to be that right turn, slip lane, so it's not a full turn movement intersection, which, you know, some customers are going to have to circulate through the Carver Commons development to get to the site. Think I'll stop there. And with the canopy, I will say, all work is under the canopy, and I do have, I guess, one option I can bring up, you know, that, that we've got on a couple projects I've been involved in, that had noise concerns brought up, so I'd like to share that with you. I guess I could share it right now, but we do have projects where you can enclose the east, the east side of the canopy, to mitigate, you know, any noise traveling towards Jonathan Carver Parkway, and also the residential homes. And I guess one thing to point out is that highway, I haven't, I don't know the trips per day, but maybe Erin can speak to that, but, you know, decibel levels for highway have a considerable sound, amount of sound, so I, you know, I think the two, the way we're looking at it right now, preliminarily, will cancel each other out. I'll, I'll stop there.
Can you?
And ask if there's any questions, or Erin, I'll let you, let you go.
Sure. So, good evening, Ron. My name is Courtney Johnson, I'm the mayor of the city of Carver. Erin, can you, so Ron threw out a proposal for the canopy issue, does that satisfy our requirements?
Probably not.
Okay.
Just because it says it needs to be fully enclosed.
Okay.
But we could explore that option if Les Schwab has some potential ideas.
Okay. Can you hear us okay, Ron?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Super. All right. I am going to just jump into my laundry list that I have here. So Ron, it's still Courtney speaking, I, stream of consciousness, as I was going through the packet, I just, I'm a little disappointed, quite honestly, to see that none of the feedback from the planning commission meeting that took place 10 days ago is incorporated into what we're seeing here tonight. It looks like a lot of the issues that they brought up, the questions and concerns that they shared, still remain in these concept plans. And I'm just curious, Ron, to understand this area, you've done a great job with the drawings, but I think to be in our community and to understand this area almost requires a site visit. Has anyone from Les Schwab or your, your company been to the city of Carver?
Yes, you know, Les Schwab has definitely been to the site, and I know, you know, Tom, you may be aware of some of those visits, but, you know, they've definitely toured the site, toured the town, and, you know, this piece, this corner is important to them.
Okay, fantastic. It's important.
And, you know, and I, I would, he had that meeting, it's July 4th, we, my planned vacation, so it's, yeah, it's, I apologize for that.
Nope. So, you know, I, my concern with how this building is, and kind of seeing the drawings, I'm going to take a half a step back. I, in my role, I've been privy to whisperings of Les Schwab for a little bit, and have been excited, because I Googled Les Schwab, and the building that's on the Cushing Terrill website, the Bozeman location, is stunning. It's a good-looking building, and the, the drawings that we're seeing for the Carver location don't look much like that building, if I'm being honest. Jonathan Carver Parkway is our freeway commercial district, it leads into our community, and a lot of folks, for a long time, you know, Carver's identity was, oh yeah, I live in the city of Carver. Oh, is that the one with the Fleet Farm? So it's very, you know, the, the commercial properties there are very, very, very visible, which is excellent for commercial development. I take issue with this building because it looks like it proverbially has its back turned towards the main thoroughfare, the gateway to our city. I would like to see more on the backside, which is the east side, the side that faces Jonathan Carver Parkway. Even if it's faux windows, I think there needs to be, needs to be more there. I don't want to see the bullpen from Jonathan Carver Parkway. I don't know if that's a requirement, that it be away from the building for fire code or other reasons, but I would love to see it tucked in as close to the building as possible, and not have any visibility, and I'm, I'm not talking screening, I'm talking moving it. I don't want to see it from Jonathan Carver Parkway. I have concerns about the noise levels, especially since it's adjacent to a residential area, but maybe that would be taken care of if that canopy goes away. You gave us the, how much does a truck weigh lesson, do campers and trucks weigh less than 12,000 pounds?
Yes.
Thank you. Didn't know who to look at, then you helped. Okay. Let's see, I, just with the canopy there, full disclosure, my significant other is a mechanic, he works on aircraft. I think that just for Minnesota, we have a real harsh, very unforgiving climate here in winters, minus the one that we just went through, but I, I don't think that that's a very great work environment outside in the middle of the winter, just as an editorial comment. What I do take issue with, and I think that this goes towards why we can't do the canopy, is we have another user that we discussed earlier tonight, that's going to be a bus garage, and we are asking the district in our earliest conversations to make sure that all of their work occurs inside of the building, that there's nothing parked outside, so we have to treat everyone equally. Let's see. I think that might be it for my comments, just at this point, but I reserve the right to bring more.
Christie, looks like you're ready to tag in. Yeah, so looking at the, the picture here of the one in Bozeman, or another building, that building is very aesthetically pleasing, it adds some better view shed to the building. I have to be really honest, I don't, I think this, I don't have a problem with the business coming in, I don't think if we look at something like we see at the Bozeman, as to this very utilitarian building that's coming in, fits with the aesthetics of the gateway that we are and have been, and will continue to be putting through on that County Road 11, on that Jonathan Carver Parkway area that's coming into town. If I remember, this is, this is a question for staff, when Fleet Farm came in, we had some very specific things that we requested of them, to make their building aesthetically fit with, with Carver, with our vision for Carver, because we have one chance to do this, right? So I'm, for me, if we were willing to have another business, you know, that is, you know, statewide, and if we were willing to put them on some notice to have certain aesthetics, then I would assume that we would have that for this same building as well.
Ron, do you mind speaking to your application of code to this project?
Sure. Application of codes, are we talking building materials?
Yes.
Get him pulled up here in my laptop. So it's pre, the building's constructed of precast tilt-up walls with three different, I believe it's three different variations in, in texture and color of the site, of the concrete. And, you know, based on the code, you know, that's, in reading the code, you know, it's a little seem vague on precast concrete tilt-up, but, yeah, I guess this is the point of the meeting, is I guess for feedback, Erin, and, you know, providing us better direction. But in our mind, you know, the color variation and the precast concrete is applicable to the code, but I guess we can use this meeting to discuss on that.
Okay. Yes, and so I think, Courtney said, and now I've just said that, I think that there's possibly a better design. I realize you're doing tire work, but this is also coming into our city. When it comes to, I know the bullpen was an, was an issue, I don't have an issue with it, the bullpen, if it's there, it's against at least an outlot that has a pond, and not, you know, it's not right next to the residential side of the housing. It, to me, it kind of is what it is. When it comes to the canopy and that discussion, if that's something that's strictly written in code, then I follow that, that's what that is. But for me, again, the building, aesthetics, and then, but for the bullpen, I could, I have no care either way where it's placed on there, it can be placed right where it's at. at.
Mayor?
Okay.
Can I jump in?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, in light of council member Max's question, I was just curious, because I wasn't here when Fleet Farm came in, but was that a PCD? Erin, do you remember?
I wasn't here either, but I think yes. It was because of that sign. And the Tiff District.
I guess I'll, I'll jump in. This is council member Reed Welch. Yeah, I guess I've kinda, it just kinda looks uninspiring, right? Your, your main view to people coming into Carver and to go to the store is just, you know, a flat wall, right? So any, anything you do to make it even more inviting for customers, I think, and then also prove the aesthetic. And then on, obviously, the landscaping is rough on the preliminary, but, but definitely I would like to see, you know, shrubs or some significant landscaping around the bullpen, again, to try to minimize the view and make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible, again, for customers and just the general community. I, you know, the sound is, is a concern. Again, they seem like the levels are in intolerance, but we wanna make sure that that stays, stays there, I guess, with the residential area right behind there. Yeah, again, without repeating anything else that Emma said, those are my thoughts.
Eric?
Okay, this is council member Pershman. I also attended the planning commission meeting when this was discussed. I know there were questions around the orientation of the building, if that could be changed. As the mayor noted, it doesn't look like there have been any changes to, from suggestions from that meeting. So if, if you are unable to change the orientation, I also agree that there needs to be some window treatment then at the back end of the building, and that's probably with windows. Something to have an appealing presentation as you're coming into the city. I do wanna point a clarification here, though. The, we're talking about this, the awning, uh, there is no outdoor work allowed. So there's no, unless that's fully enclosed, that isn't going to meet city code, correct?
Correct.
What about the doors being open in the service bay? Is if the doors are open while work is being conducted, is that considered indoors? Because I see a lot of, a lot of these kind of stores will run with those doors open all day long. Is that, does that constitute indoors if the doors are open?
Everyone's looking at me. That's a good question. I mean, I, I view that frankly as, as inside, although if they're gonna violate noise standards when the doors are open, that's an issue. And so if closing those doors means complying with MPCA noise regulations, I think that's going to be important for them to keep in mind. The one thing that I'm, I'm maybe hearing, although it hasn't been specifically said yet, but it's sort of reading between the lines, it sounds like maybe all those doors are facing west for a reason. They're not facing the residential, which is across the freeway, maybe for noise reasons, maybe for visual or aesthetic reasons. And I guess I just, I don't, I don't want the council's message of maybe orient, reorientate the building a certain amount of degrees to adversely affect the significant noise impacts, too, that this could have. There might be sort of a give and take there if that happens. And so I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that. But to your additional questions, the way I read the code is that canopy, you know, if it exists, work cannot be performed underneath the canopy. Work has to be performed inside. That canopy is not, to me, a structure that would accommodate the type of work that can be in this district, so.
I also just wanted to share, procedurally, an applicant will get feedback from the planning commission and the city council before they do a revision to the site plan. Otherwise, it would be, the planning commission might have some feedback, the council might say, no, we love that part, don't change it.
That's what's cool.
So, I just want, I wanted to say that to Ron and this group, that it's not typical to get two different versions between the meetings, so.
That's.
I do have some feedback. Hi, Ron. I'm council member Lori Sayer. The noise concern? Well, I guess I don't wanna use the word concern, but definitely, we ha, I think we have a lot of options, maybe some more that can be mitigated. But I don't wanna be in a position where I say, oh no, we can't have a business here because you're too loud. I realize this is so early in the process, but we need to figure that out. So there's that part. And then the other, some clarified questions. Did you say the hours are eight to six Monday through Friday?
Uh, yes, eight to six Monday, and then eight to five on Saturdays.
All right. And did you say there's only one delivery a week?
That's, yep, that's what they, that's what they tell us, yes.
That's really hard to believe.
Well, they pick up the tires once a week in deliveries, depending on the amount of business they do. Um, you know, that, that could vary, but.
When we get further into the process, it would be helpful to have more information on that part. And as far, it seems to that, um, this is the time to talk about the aesthetics of the building. And this is probably, you've heard this more than once, but we like to say the gateway to Carver, but it's also the gateway to Carver's historic district. And I think we have some other buildings that have done a really good job of blending modern and historic, even our own city hall. And just, I mean, this is, this is the road if you're gonna go to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. I mean, there's, there's other things, too, that people are, you know, using that area for commerce, you know? They have a reason to drive to and from it and pass it. So I would like to see something that blends in better with the gateway to Carver's historic district from an aesthetics point of view. Those are my only, my only things of feedback. Thank you.
Um, Ron, it's Courtney again. I, just a few things, questions that I had while you were speaking. You were talking about the deliveries and how they would go through from the south part of the building to the east part of the building to avoid points of conflict with customers. Does that mean, tell, can you, tell me what that means, please?
Oh, just, you know, it's just safer to have those, those larger delivery trucks circulate around the building than driving right in front of the, uh, the bays.
Less opportunity to hit a pedestrian, is what I hear you saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, just eliminating those possibilities of conflict.
Okay. The only other thing, you said natural screening from the highway. I think, just in looking at this, the topography of this site, I believe, as I've been driving past, is a little bit lower than where Hometown Bank and QuickTrip are located. And I think in a way, there's a natural screening if you would be standing at this site, in that you maybe, and I, I haven't stood in that site, but you can't maybe perhaps see some of the sightlines from across Jonathan Carver Parkway, or for some of the other users that are on the United Properties development area. But I think that also works against you, in that it, because it's down lower, it will be very visible from Jonathan Carver Parkway, and probably to a large extent, the, what would that be? The eastbound lanes of 212, especially the off-ramps. So I think that's why we're harping so hard on the aesthetics, the look, and what we're seeing here, especially versus, you know, what your firm is highlighting on their website is a really nice example of your work. Any other comments?
Can we get clarification on what they used for the noise? What was?
No, I wanted to ask.
This is council member Pershman again. I have a question as to what was used to generate those decibel level for radiation out from the building? Is that the loudest potential noise source? What, what was?
That, that's, um, that, so I used some owner-provided documentation from some other past noise, noise studies they've done for decibel level in front of bays. Um, that, that's what we used, you know? Receiving those, you know, I think it was last week, you know, I was on, you know, from the planning commission to this week. So in the time that we had, you know, that, that's what we put together, just with data that's already out there, just to give a decent understanding of what to be, what should be expected.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I do have one question, Ron. This is David Anderson, the city attorney. My, my question is about that work that is, at least to date, has been proposed under the canopy. Is that the general source of the noise and the decibel levels that we're seeing on the east side of 212 there?
It was, yeah. So that, that assumed an open canopy. So, you know, what, what I'm gonna do after this meeting and then next week is get with the team and, you know, go over some other alternatives higher than even enclosing the east side. So there's some other ideas that we have to, I guess, mitigate the sound even more. And then, more importantly, meet the, meet the no work outside part of the code. So there's some things we can do there. Uh, um, yes. So that exhibit I provided did assume, you know, not enclosed canopy. So if it was fully enclosed, you know, there'd be a pretty significant reduction.
I'm just gonna add on to that. On the front of the building, then, is the 64 dB with the doors open or shut?
That will, doors will.
I'm sorry, doors open?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Any other questions, comments, feedback? All right. Uh, thank you, Ron and Tom, appreciate it. All right, moving on.
Thanks, Ron. I'll email you.
Uh, item number four in the Erin Smith show, the Timber Creek, Timber Creek Fifth Edition. Smith?
Okay, in our journey of applications that are split, we're going to talk about two agenda items in one with Timber Creek. Oh, Kelly left now, too. Okay, so let's talk to Timber Creek, the Lennar project, that is our big construction project this summer. So we've been working on this project since 2021. The council has seen it so many times. We've had so many applications for this project, and we're thinking this might be the final application of the city council. The first agenda item is a planned residential development amendment, so PRD amendment that we'll work through. And then we'll review phase five of their project. So on the screen now, this was one of the really early documents that they put together, showing the general location being west of Carver Elementary. For those who are not super familiar with the project, a reminder that it's a mix of townhomes and single-family. There were 74 townhomes with phase one. Phase one also included the expansion to Ironwood Park, so the new park in the area. This also highlights the trail and sidewalk plan that I'll talk a little bit throughout the entire plan, because it's a unique feature and something that I think makes this project pretty special. So we'll start with the PRD amendment. This is a pretty technical review, so I'll go through some information, ask for some questions before we enter into the phase five discussion, just to keep it clean. So a PRD, or a planned residential development, allows for deviation from our city code. So if a project comes in and they say, we can't meet XYZ of the city code, would you entertain the idea of a PRD? It's reviewed by the planning commission and the city council. Timber Creek was a PRD that was a mix of housing types, so a single-family and townhome, which is why that PRD was sparked. That's why the conversation started. A PRD creates a standalone ordinance for a specific district. So at this point, Timber Creek has its own zoning ordinance. Brookview has its own zoning ordinance. Meadows at Spring Creek has its own zoning ordinance. So it creates something outside of our code that's specific to that one project. So again, this will be reviewed by planning commission and city council. Since it's a PRD amendment, we're technically rewriting the ordinance for the entire Timber Creek development, so a public hearing was required. The planning commission held that public hearing at their June 20th meeting. Notice was published, letters were mailed, et cetera. So it's technically a PRD amendment, but it's a revision to that ordinance for Timber Creek specifically. So, let's talk about why. How did we get here? Why is this necessary? So with phase five, we took a really close look at the general area of where these homes are going to be, and we recognized that property adjacent to Timber Creek is going to be difficult. So if you've traveled, traveled Dollgren Road, you know that it's bluffy, it's hilly, it's challenging in a lot of ways. And our goal at a city level is to always allow a property to, to develop at its greatest extent. So what that means is that sometimes we need to make changes to a PRD, but what it typically means is that a developer is responsible for extending utilities and streets to every property line. So the next property owner is able to connect to our system really easily at that property line. So they don't need to enter someone else's property to gain access to utilities. Staff recognized this pretty late in review, which was tough. We scratched our heads a bunch, talked about needing a connection to an adjacent property at a point that is typically something we catch at preliminary plat. But we've been working with Lennar for so long, not only on Timber Creek, but also Oak Tree. So we were able to get on a couple calls with them, go back and forth, try to figure out how we could make this project work for us, which would allow for development of property adjacent, while they continue to have the same number of lots in their project. So, in a couple of slides, I'll show you some portions. So we took a 25-foot trail connection, and we needed to find an additional 25 feet to make it a public right-of-way. So we took it from a trail connection to a city street. So what we needed to find was that 25 feet to collectively make it enough space for a full street. So, Timber Creek Five is here. This is the phase five we'll be reviewing tonight. And then that trail connection is right here, circled on the map. So we always anticipated that it would connect into our trail system. But as we started to think about this general area of the project more, we took a look at this property, which we call the Bangston property. The Bangston family owns it. We've had a couple developers attempt to, the property was sold sale a couple years ago. So we met with a couple developers that were trying to develop the property. It ended up selling to just a family. So they're using it as a single-family home today. But that sparked us to know that there is development potential on the site, depending on how things work out. But it likely will not come from Dollgren Road. Access will likely not come from that direction. Because it is quite hilly, it's quite bluffy. So the property right now is not in city limits, so our bluff rules do not apply to it. So right now, they have a driveway that traverses this bluff and gets you up to their home site. When the project comes into city limits, they will need to abide by the bluff rules, and it will likely not happen that a road would be permitted from Dollgren Road through that bluffy topography. So we realized that access to that site would likely need to come from the north. So you can hear, see here, I put Timber Creek Five onto the topography. So this is the Lennar project, Timber Creek Five, the 53 lots in phase five. And then this is the property line at Bangston. So to get up to the Bangston piece that we believe is developable, developable, which is generally here, access through this steep of topography is not likely from Dollgren Road. We don't anticipate that this property will develop to be 100 new single-family homes. I would say it's going to be between eight and 15 potentially, just knowing how much of the site is bluff when it's annexed into the city and our rules apply to it. So it's a challenging site for a lot of reasons, but we want to give them development potential, should they choose to move forward in the future with the development, as opposed to just a single-family home. So here's just the topography taking Timber Creek Five off.
The, the, sorry, okay.
That is the house on the, like?
It's right here.
Okay.
Yep.
And then that's in feet, right? So there's 100 feet between Dollgren Road and where the house is in geography? Okay. Yeah, that's steep.
It is, yes. And if next time you drive Dollgren Road, just look up and you'll see that that whole area is really bluffy. So, again, we wanted to provide the option to them in the future. So if a developer were to look at this piece, we have an option for them. So what that looked like with our review and our work with Lennar was a reduction in the side corner lot. We talked a lot about this in the work session with the chickens. So corner lots technically have two front yards. So the front yard setback for the entire development of Timber Creek is 20 feet. The corner setback, or their second side yard, is also 20 feet. So house needs to be 20 feet both from the front and the corner, so to the side. So our request tonight, the PRD amendment, would be to reduce the side corner setback from 20 feet to 12 and a half for two lots. So out of all of Lennar's project, this will not impact anything besides two lots. I think I have it on the next slide. Okay. That was a lie. Here they are. So it's these two lots here. This was the trail connection. And since we're going from a trail connection to a street, these two will technically become corner lots. That's a change from the time of preliminary plat to final plat, because a trail is not a street, so it's not a corner. So we, they were able to lay out the houses here with a seven and a half foot setback instead of the 20 that would be required. We also had a public services access on the northern side here, that was 27 feet, that we were able to work with Lennar to eliminate. So the public services team, should this move forward? So the public services team, should this move forward, will access the pond and wetland here via the street and trail connection. So we're able to maintain a full access for them. It's not as direct. I will apologize to them profusely when it goes in, but it will just be a little bit longer of a route, but a route regardless. So we take some space here, and then we request a reduction from the side yard setback from 20 to 12 and a half on these two lots. So here it is on the plat, these are the same image, it's just rotated. So you can see here, we took out that 27 feet, and then we added the right-of-way here. It's High View Drive, which would access into the Bangston piece from Timber Creek Five. So again, it's technically creating a zoning ordinance, replacing the existing PRD with that reduction for those two lots from 20 to 12 and a half. Notice was posted, public hearing was held by the Planning Commission. No one was at that meeting to provide feedback, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the PRD amendment on a five-to-zero vote. If anyone from Lennar is watching, I just want to say thanks because they were really great to work with. We spitballed so many things with them, and it was frankly a really hard conversation to have at this point in the process to say, "Hang on, we need to drastically change this one area of your plat." So they were really lovely to work with, it went really well. So again, a pretty minor PRD amendment, but one that I think that we came to collectively as a group that was really helpful for all of us to understand that the Bangston piece might develop, and we'd like to give them that opportunity. So I'm going to pause on this one, see if you have any questions.
I'll go first. You anticipated my question about how many lots were anticipated at neighboring property. Is this stub street going to be a street?
Yes. It will be 24 feet, which is smaller than our standard but typical for our private street. So with the amount of lots that will be accessed off that private street, we felt comfortable. If it was going to be 100 houses, we typically wouldn't put that many. On a street that's a little bit smaller, but since it will be essentially a private drive for maybe 10 houses, we felt comfortable with that. It also meets the standards of public services and the fire department.
Okay. And then with those homes that are on the southernmost part of this, are those folks going to be able to have decks? Is that, it looks pretty bluffy there.
Yes. Yep, so the dotted line here is the building pad.
Okay.
So the house is going to be closer to the front of that, yes. I'm not concerned about it in this area. No.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions. Any more else?
I had a couple.
Go ahead.
So just looking at, it looks like when you remove the access, you kind of shifted all the lots down a little bit more. And then, I guess this may be for Erin, our engineer. So do you have any safety concerns about eliminating the setback, shrinking it from 20 feet? What was maybe the rationale of why we want houses far away from the streets typically than trails?
I'll let Erin answer the question about the setback, but I have no concerns, like Ms. Smith alluded to, it's kind of like a glorified private drive in the future should this ever develop. So the key is, we just want to make sure that's accessible and developable if that time would come in the future, and we feel this is a reasonable way to accommodate that.
Good. And then, just to say, Steph, good job catching this. I'm sure this would have been horrible if someone would have tried to develop it five years from now, so good job.
And for the setback, I believe the 20-foot is thinking about sightlines. As you approach into an intersection, you can't have houses as close.
Houses block, okay, that makes sense.
It also keeps things like sheds out of side yards that could be too close to the front of the property, but that could impact sightlines.
And then, on the public services going in there, right, presumably there'd be a cul-de-sac or I think something on the other end, right? This would not be a through street, obviously they need to have in the future development, right?
Correct.
So we wouldn't need to worry about, okay. That's it, thank you.
I'll also say we preserve the trail connection there, so it's 24 feet of right-of-way with an eight-foot trail.
Okay, so they'll coexist that once it happens.
Yes, correct.
I don't have any questions, I just want to comment that I love this. I think it is fantastic that we made that access, and what a neat area to build a home someday if that should ever sell. I love the uniqueness of it, and again, we're talking a little outside the box here, but I'm glad you caught it because there would be no other way. So, and I don't have a problem with those side yards slash alternative front yard, corner lots, because I think that, again, with some of that outside-the-box thinking, sometimes corner lots are different. So I think you did a great, great work here. I'm really happy to see this.
Eric?
So I attended the Planning Commission meeting for this. I think it's a great outcome. I am also really happy that the developer was able to making this change at late notice. And, you know, really an example of forward-thinking as we think about, you know, how do we not dig the street up to put a new pipe in, and, you know, how do we make something accessible in the future? Wonderful work. So no questions, I'm happy with the outcome.
I'm sorry, I realize I'm calling on you last. You'll go next, next time. I don't have any questions. I think it's great that this is true city planning, so appreciate everyone's effort. And I'd like to say in my comments that I think that, like, good catch, great job.
This is so funny because we felt so bad about it to be this far.
I appreciate, like, reason 564 why it wouldn't be a good city planner, is it wouldn't have been on my radar necessarily, so I appreciate you being accommodating and, like, maybe 30 years ahead of what we'll need. All right, lots of motions that we need tonight on this one.
I'll make a motion approving ordinance 03-2024, amending the planned residential development district for Timber Creek.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Sarah and a second by council member Welch. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, pause. We haven't done Timber Creek Five yet. Approving final plat? Oh, yeah, okay, 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 sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry.
So we do two, and then pause on three.
I haven't done my presentation for Timber Creek Five.
We didn't do the final. So we can move motion two.
We thought that was so great, we thought you were done.
Well, I'm not done.
Okay, we can do this motion?
Just number two.
Number two, okay.
And that'll give Erin the floor.
Okay. I move approving resolution...
Wait, 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 I don't think we did a vote on that one.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
You did, I paused you.
We did.
Did we? Okay, okay.
Okay, we can do number two?
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
I, if I didn't say it before, I.
Thank you for parting. Appreciate Brent for paying attention, for being one of us.
I'll do number two. A motion to approve resolution 127-24, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 03-2024.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Welch, second by council member Mok. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, Erin.
Back to Erin.
Thank you. Okay, this is where we pick up the motion. So now we're going to review Timber Creek Five final plat. So that was just the PRD amendment, now it's the actual final plat. All right, so we are at the last step, the last phase of Timber Creek. This might be it. Again, it's been many years in the making, you've seen this project probably 15 times at this point. So tonight, we're reviewing Phase Five final plat. It's the last step. I have it highlighted that generally there's a little deviation from the preliminary plat. This one did have some deviation that we just talked through with the PRD amendment. In the packet tonight is the developers' agreement. There are some gaps in the DA that aren't typically there. We were scrambling a little bit this week. Erin was obviously really preoccupied with a couple of things. So a couple of the numbers are coming in late, but they're included at the meeting. So there are a couple holes that aren't typical in the DA, so a thing like the warranty bond, the $2.5 million, and then the letter of credit, which is $3.1 million. Those numbers are typically in a DA that you see, but based on Erin's workload in the past week, he wasn't able to plug in those numbers. So you have those numbers. Dave has some discretion through the approval processes that he's able to make some changes to a DA, so we felt comfortable moving forward presenting these numbers to you tonight. So once the developers' agreement is signed, typically work can begin, everything gets recorded. The Planning Commission reviewed Timber Creek Phase Five and recommended approval on a five-to-zero vote. So some details, I'm going to fly through this because I think everyone's a little sick of my marathon at this point. So you can see on the screen now the breakdown of the five phases. So Phase One, 47 single-family that had the townhomes, the rest have been just single-family. The 53 single-family part of Phase Five. The rest of the project meets the PRD that was approved in 2021 with that amendment for Phase Five of those two lots from the side yard setback reduction. It's the density required that we need for a project. This was helpful for me laying out the site. So Phase One is blue, Phase Two is the red, Phase Three is yellow, Phase Four, green, and then this is the fifth addition. So it's the final portion on the southernmost portion of the property. So this is again from preliminary plat, so a couple changes here and here, but again, 53 single-family homes. Here is the technical plating document that gets recorded. This is the same view just flipped. Cindy Monroe, the chair of the Planning Commission, always struggles with things that I don't flip, so I'm getting pretty good at it now. This is the general orientation of the site. Again, you'll see the reduction of that access point here, and then the addition of High View Road here. I also want to highlight the really extensive trail system. So as part of four, we walked this ravine area with the Timber Creek team and the engineering team to establish a rugged trail system similar to Hawthorne Ridge. So coming through the Timber Creek project, we've also been working with the county to potentially create a regional trail system that hopefully someday can connect us to Oconia. This might be the start of it. So to get us further south and as far west as possible, the Timber Creek system comes in there. You can see there's the continued access. Landscape plan, so typical of what we see for Lennar projects, each lot gets two trees. And then just some general examples of what the homes in Timber Creek look like. So I'm going to pause there for discussion and potential motions by the council.
Questions? Lori? I don't have any questions or comments or feedback. Anybody? Or motions?
I had just one quick one. So I think you had mentioned this earlier, but maybe I missed it, that with this street addition, we were able to keep the trail access? Oh, great, okay, perfect.
And I only had a comment, and it was about the trail. Again, the fact that we're doing that off-road, more natural trail, I love to see things that are, again, unique and different, and it makes everything, it just makes everything better. So I'm glad to see that we have something here that is, again, different from the typical.
Just don't let the grasses grow up too high.
Yeah.
Right, yep, yep.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 126-24, approving a final plat.
I'll second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Do the developers' agreement?
Yeah. Just haven't flipped it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the execution of the developers' agreement for Timber Creek Fifth Edition, subject to any changes deemed necessary by the city attorney.
Motion by council member Mok.
I'll second.
Second by council member Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. That hereby concludes the Aaron Smith Show for this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, 8.5, employee pay-for-performance policy procedures. That's a lot of Ps in there. Let's go, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you should recognize this, this is a concept that was brought to you at your May 6 work session, and then we brought a draft policy to your June 23 work session. This is related to a pay-for-performance plan that covers three main areas, performance levels. That gets into the annual performance review, advanced skills development, which is training beyond kind of minimum requirements for that position, and then service duration to the city. So in essence, it would work like a, basically, an eight-step employee pay program, except for we've attached milestones within this policy. So it's not strictly based on merit, it's based on merit, skill and training development, and then those performance levels. With the adoption of this, this would just be for the non-union personnel at this point. We did provide an optional opportunity for union members as well as our non-union members to participate in a meeting to talk about the, or ask questions about the program. We combined that with our classification and compensation study, as well, Adam gave a presentation on that. Ultimately, what we're hoping to do with this is not only recognize performance, but as we have talked about previously, we have a number of employees that are kind of weighted and stalled out within the pay range, the minimum and maximum for their positions. And so this provides a coordinated and equitable way to bring them through the pay system. By adopting this program, you're not adopting any financial end of this, so even though our intention is to include a full milestone implementation in the 2025 budget, you would be considering that within the context of the entire budget. And if, based on that, the drafts and where you want to take the budget, as with this year or any year, we'd have to pivot and provide the council with different options as you deem necessary. I'm going to leave it open for questions. This has been reviewed by the city attorney. We did put a full implementation cost for 2025, which is approximately $105,000, 70% general and 30% enterprise. Again, that's conceptual at this point because, again, it's within the confines of the entire budget. Happy to answer any questions about the program or specific provisions within the policy and procedures.
Lori, questions? I don't have any questions. Eric?
No, I don't have any questions. That's just because we've talked about it a number of times. I think it's a great program that encourages self-improvement and development in a job title. I also think that it really helps to contribute to our competitiveness with cities close by that might want a great Carver employee, so let's keep them here with this.
Great.
No, it's just great work, Brent. I think it's a good plan, and it, yeah, like Eric said, it's a way to help retain our most valuable employees. Thanks.
We've looked at this a number of times, so I want to, maybe I'm missing a key part here. So we're going to implement this in 2025, but in order to reach the milestones, they would need the full year, so the $104,000 that we're projecting, tell me how that fits in with that. I'm missing something.
So we, there'll be a phase that we'll have to onboard them. So in 2025, there'd be an onboarding. The onboarding is strictly related to, at this point, years of service with the city and their current position. Once they're onboarded or new hires going forward, it'll be a combination of the three. But because we don't have a performance review to use, you know, at the time of implementation, and, you know, in some instances, we have, you know, 25-year employees, we certainly, you know, I don't think it'd be fair to them to try to get them to produce training records for the last two decades. So we'll onboard folks, and then going forward, it would be based on those criteria. But that, the onboarding based on years of service in their position is where that $105,000 comes from.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. I think this is great. I would just be echoing everything that everyone else said, but hopefully this will not only draw folks to the city of Carver as an employer, but also keep all of you who are here tonight for a good long time. I'll make a motion to adopt the Performance Pay Plan and Procedures Milestone Program.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Pershman. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, back to chickens. We were at, let's see, side yards. Which is on, so for those who may be joining us, we started this discussion during our work session, and we're going to just pick it right up where we left off. So we are on the packet for the work session, it is page...
Four?
It's on page three, it's 6-24. Yep, and it's letter D.
D, yep, that's right.
Okay. So, let's see, we were talking because of the tricky side yard issues with corner lots if this should be allowed on side yards in addition to backyards. Do you want, what are you looking for now?
Yeah. So where, I guess, where is the restriction on the... So where, I guess, where is the restriction on the placement on the property? I didn't see that. Is that a general, um, right, that it was only in the front yard or only in the backyard?
Sure, yeah, it's, uh, it's in six dash two three four, subparagraph C, which says that a coop and run must be located in the rear yard, and-
And then that follows with D, the pro, okay, gotcha.
So we were discussing, am I jumping ahead of you?
No, go ahead. Yeah, no, I just, okay.
We, we were discussing, um, corner lots and how they differ because they're considered to have two front yards by our zoning ordinance, correct, Erin? And we talked about the historic district and the, all of the city of Carver, um, and how corner lots, in my opinion, are now somewhat penalized as to where they can put them because technically they don't have two side yards, they only have one, um, by our zoning ordinance. And when I'm looking at downtown Carver as compared to other Carver, um, the rest of Carver, the historic district by nature and by history is very unique, and we often have to make different concessions for the district itself because it was built, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago. It's not to today's standards. It does, i- it warrants the difference that it holds for us. Um, and for me, I don't have an issue, um, I personally don't have an issue anywhere in town, if you were a corner lot, to have, to have what is considered, what would appear, like, appear to be the side. I'm not sure, I know you had had some language that you were talking about where, where the curb cut is, or you enter into the, to the lot when we were talking in the, in the work session. But I, especially in the downtown area, because it is so unique, um, for those corner lots, there is a way to write an exception in our downtown historic district. We do it for many different things down here. But I think I, I have a really hard time putting a detriment on someone because they bought a corner lot, that they don't have two side lots now.
Erin Smith, for the sake of definition, where does your front yard end and your side lot begin? Is it at the front of your home?
Yes, the face of your home.
Okay, can we just take a poll? I, I would prefer to see backyard chickens kept in the backyard. Eric, can I put you on the spot?
Yeah, you can. So I agree with Christie that, so I'm gonna side with Christie that you can't penalize a property owner because they don't have a lot that meets the zoning ordinance. There's gonna have to be some cutout for them if they want, they want to do this.
Um, same opinion.
Guys, can we all just turn on our mics?
Yeah, sorry.
It's hard to remember. And it was really hard to follow along.
And part of that is, um, I live on like a triple corner lot, or double, I don't know what it's called, but yeah. I, I don't see it in my future, but if I could talk to family and do it, that chicken coop would go on the side.
Okay, so it sounds like we have momentum to have a backyard and side yard chicken ordinance.
Yep.
Can that be defined, though, if you can't put it in the backyard? I mean, so that's only for a, only for a corner lot?
Only for a corner lot?
Because you don't have a choice.
Yeah. I don't have any objections to that.
I would say as long as you meet D, I don't, right, if you can't keep it ten feet from the property line and twenty feet from, uh, adjacent, adjacent structure in your neighbor's yard, basically, and not in your front yard, I, I think you could put it anywhere. I, I guess I'd be more permissive than less, as long as you meet D.
Can we talk only, is it possible, is that something that we can say is just for side lots that applies? Or corner lots?
I, I don't see why not. We can, we can make sure we use that qualifier.
If you are willing, I would love to use Eric's example as a compromise and say for side, uh, corner lots, side chicken coops are okay, but otherwise it is backyard chickens.
And we might, I mean, just to make life easier for everybody, then I might change the ordinance to like residential chickens or something. Backyard chickens would be a bit of a-
Stop leading us there.
We, but we can make some of those sort of other changes, just to the extent they make sense. But yes, if that's the consensus.
Yeah, ask Eric a clarifying question. Um, Eric, what you were talking about, were you talking specifically corner lots, or were you talking any lot?
So the reason for, we don't want to disallow somebody from doing this. So if, if it is a corner lot, there is no back, then I think there's a carve-out specifying for corner lots. Now, are you saying, is there another lot dimension that it wouldn't qualify?
No, no, I'm fine with that. I just wasn't sure if you meant any lot could be on the side, or if you were specifically calling it corner lots.
I'm saying that the carve-out is for the corner lot.
Okay.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Where are we now? We're still there.
Heated.
I'm in, yep, I'm in G two for heated.
Where are we?
Two, three, four, F.
Apparently-
Top of page five in the packet.
Yeah. Chicken coop must have a heat source for winter months? Is that?
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, F, I was also on the heat ones.
I talked to a constituent who has chickens, and apparently chickens are typically not, you're typically not supposed to heat the coop in the winter because the chicken does not acclimate, acclimate, sorry, uh, to the winter, right, if it, if it's, uh, they're naturally birds, and they survive in the winter on their own, as long as they have a sheltered. And then again, it seems overly restrictive on how you build your chicken coop. I, I don't, I don't know why the city cares if you heat your chickens or let the chickens stay warm on their own. I mean, obviously, the owner wants their chickens to survive, so I'm sure they would do whatever they think is best, but it seems overly-
I picked chicken eggs in my youth in a non-heated coop. I don't know why the city cares either way.
You're talking about G?
Is that F?
No, I'm sorry. I was like, I don't see a light.
No, I said G first, and then when we went back.
Yeah, sorry.
I just think this is a little micromanaging. If you want to heat it, heat it. If you don't,
Don't, yeah.
Acclimate chickens, you-
Yeah.
I'm fine with striking F.
Okay.
Wait, but, sorry, guys. That's on striking F.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, and it's what I, the way I understand it, it's not actually the, uh, there's a comp, it's kind of like a comp that generates heat, but yeah, I don't, I don't think that needs to be spelled out.
Yeah.
Lori?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. Okay. Striking F. You're, now you're on G.
Now we're on G, okay.
Okay.
I think, okay, so G is that they have to have two feet per this and eighteen inches between the ground and the floor. Again, when I was looking at some other ordinances, they were basically, it was, it wasn't quite a specific, saying it must be exactly eighteen, right? So it was, you know, the same things that it, it has to have a space between it. I'm just wondering if we really care that we need to call out exact numbers. I think that, again, I, I don't know that we need to go measure that it's exactly eighteen feet.
Inches.
Or inches, sorry. Eighteen feet, wow!
Big chicken.
We're gonna have to call some more paperwork for that, yeah. You know, this one says, you know, like, maintain a good condition, and, uh, let's see. Do you have a proposed number that it should be? I don't think we need to call out the number because I'm trying to find it in here.
What are you recommending, what is your edit to G?
Okay.
My edit to G is, to get back to it quick, okay, my edit to G is to just say, they must be elevated, taking out these, the numbers that no one's gonna go and measure anyways. Just, they must be elevated with clear open space between the ground and the floor and framing, so, and it must not exceed this and that.
So it says at least eighteen inches. It doesn't say eighteen.
Right. That's, I mean, there, there's so many different-
Two and a half feet.
There's so many different styles of coops.
Yeah.
Eighteen, it's right there. There's so many different styles of coops. I don't think I'm gonna tell somebody how much, what, how many feet, there's, some people have stand-up ones, some people have them on the ground, some, or some close to the ground.
I don't think I hear you saying it, but I want to keep in the two square feet per chicken, because I don't really see-
A minimum, sure.
But I think we should have some number in there at least.
For the maximum size.
Yeah.
So at one point, does it become an outbuilding? Or does it become an outbuilding based on size?
So this is minimum size, not maximum size?
Well, we have a not exceeding total thirty square feet.
On the first line.
That is maximum.
I'm sorry. I, okay, sorry, I didn't get that far. Okay, let's-
So I guess, uh, Christie, maybe your edit would be to, uh, must be elevated, and then drop everything except for, and then must not exceed that six feet in total height? Just say elevated, but not specify a number?
I guess, you know, I, the height, for me, it's just more of like, every coop is a little bit different. The height one, I'm not as concerned, I don't know what are, if we have an accessory, what is the height for accessory structures?
Seventeen feet.
Oh.
And so for Eric's question, at what point does it become a-
Outbuilding, or a-
Outbuilding or shed, or-
So we take permit for any accessory structure. Anything under two hundred square feet is a zoning permit. Anything above requires building permit. So I don't think anyone is gonna build two hundred square feet.
And for what it's worth, correct me if you disagree, Erin, but, um, I assume most properties have a maximum amount of accessory structures. I don't view these as accessory structures. I think those are garages, detached garages, sheds, storage buildings, those kinds of things. Chicken coops are sort of their own animal part of the pun. They wouldn't be considered an accessory structure under our, under our zoning codes.
For G, would you be comfortable with just saying maybe four inches above ground? It seems like it's more to, um, detier from rodents.
So my, rodents can climb.
Yeah.
Uh, so my say, well, they want air flow and things underneath it. The coop rodent resistant. So for G, I guess, if we want to mix it, so I'm less concerned about the square feet. I think if, if we're gonna go up to six chickens, though, we might need to do a little more calculation to make sure that thirty is actually correct, and it's not thirty-four, or whatever it is. If we have, if we go back to the, the free range, oh, Lord, uh, but if we go back to the free range where they can do that inside the fence and things like that, then the size of the coop, I, I'm not as concerned about the largeness, because they, these birds can then get outside, outside of that and do their thing. I mean, does that sound, if we do some recalculations to make sure that six chickens at a minimum of six, and that thirty square feet makes sense with the number of chickens you're having, eighteen inches off the ground, I'm not gonna go out and measure anybody's eighteen inches off the ground. I don't care.
My only concern is that, I do think there needs to be a not-to-exceed number by square feet.
Oh, sure.
Because again,
Yeah.
we're gonna have somebody push the limits, and we don't want a chicken condominium.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with, with some, with that, I think, but if, if we have the option to have then chickens outside, whether in the fence, if that's where we land, then the size of the coop isn't such a big deal.
Yeah, we probably don't need the minimum two square feet for chicken. No, I think we do need that. I just worry about the animal welfare aspect of it, not trying to get three chickens into a shoebox.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine with me. I do think the eighteen inches off the ground is neither here nor there.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah.
I don't have any issues with eighteen inches.
Okay.
I just, I worry about rodents and attracting. Lord knows they can climb, but-
Most of them are closed off, though, because the chickens hang out.
Yeah.
Because you, otherwise you'll get, you could get a fox under there, right, because they're already usually closed to the ground.
Uh, yeah, and I think for what it's worth, I could be wrong, but I think that one of the points of just elevating it at all is to eliminate, like, the moisture buildup, and then that will, the wood will rot, or whatever's down there will rot. And then you're gonna get like the burrowing sorts of rodents that are gonna come up, and it's gonna become a problem. So whatever, whatever the council wants in terms of, you can either put the minimum, maximum, or just say a clear, open space, um, I think.
A clear, open space would be-
Yeah, I, I guess, perfect, yeah.
Does that feel, I just feel like it needs to be quantitated, even if it's twelve inches.
Sure.
I'm not married to eighty, eighteen inches, but I feel like for inspection's sake.
Six inches, six.
Six to twelve.
Then it's off the ground.
Don't hear nine and a half.
Six. Six?
Nine and a half, okay, nine and a half.
Nine and a half, okay, yeah.
Can we say nine inches?
Okay.
Go down by half.
Sure, yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay, nine inches.
Okay, and then-
I don't like how we got there, but here we are.
Okay, so that cushion on H.
Yep.
Now, now that, we, going back to our initial discussion on the free range with the fencing, so what, is the chicken run just part of the coop itself, or are we counting like the entire yard? Because it says we have a maximum of-
Think of a screened-in porch. It's like the chicken's screened in porch.
Okay, that's why it's chicken, so it would be attached to the chicken coop, not part, okay. Okay, does thirty feet seem big enough? Don't we want more room for chickens as much, as much as a person wants, right? I mean, it's their yard, if they want to make it forty, is that, I mean-
Thirty square feet is actually not that big.
Yeah, it's like three by ten, or three by, you know-
Six by five?
Yeah, six by, yeah, there, thank you, right?
Let's see how many ways we can do that.
No, um, I don't know.
I would be for increasing that just a hair.
Like fifty feet? Fifty square feet, that's five by ten, maybe?
That would be five.
That's a number.
For a half a dozen chickens, that feels huge.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you have a dog kennel, it's bigger than that in your yard.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I guess, I guess it ties into what are we calling, like, their chicken, I mean, I want the person to give the chicken as much space as possible, right?
This is just the runs.
This is just the runs, okay.
I'm ha, I'm happy to increase the number.
Not their bedroom.
Yep, not their bedroom. It's a green porch. Yeah, it's a recent.
On the green porch.
I would be happy to increase that number a bit, forty to fifty. I mean, because really, if you think of those numbers, it's not like fifty feet that way, right?
Right, yeah.
It's much smaller when you actually-
Okay, it seems small to me, but-
What did they tell you this day and last?
I think I missed the day we studied chicken poop.
Well, you're, you're, all the split we need right now.
Luckily, that wasn't on the bar exam.
Okay, um, okay, I guess that was my comment.
So what's the number?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Maximum?
That exists in several city ordinances.
Fifty does?
Fifty does.
This is on a run or a coop, or both?
This is the run.
Next.
We're almost there, Courtney, you better promise. We were so close.
Did it have heated in there twice? Or is that, no, that was me, never mind. Go ahead.
This is just for A, so I had made a notice here, so it says, any property permitted to have chickens in this article, including the chicken coop, but, uh, maybe inspected at a reasonable time. And I was wondering, is there something here, I made it for that? Or run? Nope, okay, oh, do they have notice, because they're, you know, we're going on a private property? How does that work to go and, and look for things, or, or check out for the, any property permitted? They have to have notice, or we can't?
We would give them notice, um, I mean, that's common practice. I mean, much like the building code gives our building official the authority to inspect any building when they deem it necessary. City staff would be able to do it here, um, but it's just good government, good practice to always provide someone notice we're gonna come inspect a property.
So the way it said here, though, it says maybe inspected at any reasonable time by authorized city. I don't think that calls out necessarily that we notice them. It just says, we're gonna inspect it at a reasonable time. I think it's fair to say we're gonna notice when we go on people's property, right?
How do other ordinances related to inspection read?
So typically, anecdotally, when I get a call from a neighbor that's angry with another, and they want one of us to come check it out, they often say, come in my yard, I'll show you, come on my deck. I have pictures. We also, the city always maintains drainage and utility easement that allows us access to property. We don't use it often in a way that we want to surprise someone, but we do have the ability to use it for things like long grass, uh, junk in a yard. We typically try to see it from a street. If we can't, we try to work with the person who's talking about it. Uh, we, sometimes neighbors send in photos. We get those pretty regularly.
I have no concern legally adding, you know, city staff, she'll make, um, attempts to provide advanced written, or advanced notice to the property if we're gonna go on their private property. That's not a problem. I think we do that anyway, but if you want it spelled out in the ordinance, I have no issue with it.
I'm gonna keep it consistent with other ordinances, because I think, I, I don't have an issue with spelling it out, but I just think it should be consistent. So why should it not say that my, I'm failing my grass could be inspected by you coming into my backyard? Just, it feels like a lot of catch-up work to make it consistent.
Okay, I'm, the only reason, because it's in practice, right? So this is what we do in practice, but it isn't what we do in, in writing. So do we start here with something, or do we say practice is working until it, until it doesn't?
I don't know that the prac, our current practice doesn't work, so.
Right.
I agree, it, it doesn't make sense to call it out here and then not go back and amend other ordinances.
Okay, but we're being assured by current city staff that the process is that we would notify if we're going to go on someone's property.
Correct.
Yeah, we don't.
It's attempted.
Right, right.
We don't go on, frankly, anyone's property without notifying them. Like, either they call for an inspection, or if there is a code complaint, we'll call and say, I'd like to set up a visit to look at your property. Or if it's a drainage issue, we'll call, we, from A to Z, every member of the staff, we won't go on someone's property without them being there and, and letting, we will knock on the door.
Right.
But we're not gonna just start walking around someone's yard.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you. Does it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Get that, don't I'm pressing on.
Yeah, I'm done.
You guys have the same list?
No.
Pretty different.
Okay. Mine's much longer.
All right, as hard as it was to get there, do you have what you need from us?
I do, and I appreciate it. It's really, really difficult to.
Preach.
Put together an ordinance that, that might be, you know, well-received. And obviously, there's no perfect form for these things. They're, they vary in every community, so I, I appreciate the feedback. We can work with that. I guess my only question for the council is whether you want it just brought to Planning Commission and then back to council for approval? Or if you wanna look at the revisions before we go through that process?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At a work session?
Yeah, work session.
I was gonna say, I'm good with it. I feel like you were taking notes pretty furiously, but I, if somebody wants to see.
Would it, if we didn't do a work session, would it be on a consent agenda or would it be an agenda item?
We, I mean, we would run it through Planning Commission and bring it to council, and it's still not set in stone. Until you adopt it, you can still tweak it. So don't get me wrong, it's not like this is, you're giving me all the trust to pick together exactly what you want.
Would we need a public hearing? Because it's a road update.
So there's always the Planning Commission review.
I mean, I think there's probably enough chance for feedback if we're gonna have to have a public hearing and send it through the Planning Commission.
So no work session, go straight to.
I don't see a need for work session.
I don't.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it feels pretty good where we are.
I can live with that.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, we are on to communications. Brent, you did yours in the work session?
I just have, I'm gonna invite Brenda Goodup. So this is our first meeting using our YouTube technology and a different agenda application for viewing, so Brenda's gonna share some, an overview of that.
Okay, so there's lots of details about transitioning programs, but I took some notes, so I wouldn't get caught into the weeds.
See us discuss chickens.
I'm gonna try to avoid that, so.
Courtney, jump out of her seat right now.
Get the YouTube algorithms, see how.
So for city council and planning commission meetings, we broadcast those meetings live and then make the videos available online after the meetings. So we wanted to, as a staff, move away from what we were using, which was Granicus. We had experienced some significant issues, caused a lot of stress and just, unfortunately, we weren't able to deliver as great of a product as we had wanted. So with that move, we took a look at a couple different programs and with the help of Lynn Shutey, she kind of was great assisting me along the way to look at some different options. So some of those options that we looked at included some new reliability with the streaming and then integrations with our Civic Plus website and then, as well as some cost savings. So on Friday, we got the packet out with the new, three new programs. So with the mass notification system, which is the email alerts that go out, that's a new program. And then the Agenda Center on our website is where we're posting the agendas now. And then we set up the YouTube meeting, so then that's where we're streaming tonight. So we've copied the agenda into there as well. So we got that all taken care of for our first meeting, and as far as I know, everything's running great.
We shall just have it. Thumbs up.
Awesome, best news ever. So a couple more to-dos with that. We, I need to just, I spent a little bit of time scrubbing the website, looking to make sure we're not diverting people back to Granicus. We wanna make sure every link we have is pointing to our new methods. And then the other one is kind of a big one, is taking our packets and our videos and figuring out where we're gonna store those and make those available for the historical data. So more to come on that. And then just, it was a team effort. As I mentioned, Lynn helped kind of guide me along the way and support me through the changes. But in ti, in addition to that, Kevin and Michelle from Chaska Communications were fantastic. Transitioning to YouTube, getting us accounts set up and alerting us to what software and hardware we needed to implement with that. And then Vicky was right by my side with all of the YouTube, so that was fantastic. And then in addition to that, it was kind of a huge undertaking to figure out how to set up a website for the Agenda Center module. And both Lynn and Christine had experience with that, so they were both helpful at that on Friday. So I feel like we've got solid team supporting and.
The village put this together and made it happen.
Absolutely.
Historic flood.
Right.
Yes, yes. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Brent, I think you said it's still TBD as to where the past agendas go.
Correct.
But, and I, in that old system, I know I was able to search agendas and be like, ugh, when was the last time we talked about the levy? And just type in levy and it would pop up. Will we still have that searchability?
That is a goal of ours, so as you say that, I knew that was one of the goals too, but I'm curious now. I'm probably gonna go back to my computer and search in the Agenda Center, an item from tonight, to see what that brings up. But definitely for the past, like, some of the options, I've reached out to our website to see if there's a good storage option there. Another option is Laserfish, so we could possibly use that, and that has, I know, great search features as well. So we'll kind of weigh out our options once I learn a little bit more, but a little bit TBD on that still, so.
Super. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I do wanna say thank you for looking into something new because Granicus was failing for us and, and that's failing for us to the community because we, transparency is what is the nature of our game. And when we can't get the broadcasts out, that, that doesn't feel great to me. That seems like the transparency level isn't there that we want it to be. So I really appreciate you guys moving on to something else.
I feel like since we're on YouTube, we have a higher probability of viral video going out.
Oh, no.
Maybe it's the great chicken debate.
Of twenty twenty-four, right? We gotta add the year in.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, all right, Lori, communication updates.
Uh, I haven't had any additional meetings, but I don't know how to, like, summarize the great work everyone did, so I'm gonna use somebody else's words. So over the weekend, someone, I'll just call him Mr. S, sent in a unsolicited feedback regarding the flood. Said, just wanted to give a shout out to the city crews and first responders, worked hard, thank you. Some of his words that he shared, unsolicited, and I, for, yeah, city crews and first responders, they did a lot of hard work, so thank you.
Eric?
Well, I can't add much more than everything that's been said. I had a conversation with Brent maybe a week ago. The city staff response was just outstanding. Communication was outstanding to us, to community members. And I, I had made a comment too, that I could not think of a better team-building exercise. So even though it's, you know, our performance when the clouds are dark, I think those sometimes really best define you, how you respond in those kind of situations. So it certainly, I think, will, will help everybody in that, in that respect, working together. So I did attend the Planning Commission meeting. Everything we talked about in there got covered well today, so I have nothing I can add. I also attended the Southwest Transit meeting, and I don't have my notes because the battery died on my iPad. However, I'll tell you that Southwest Transit's entering into a three-year contract with a company called May for semi-autonomous prime transportation for the city of Eden Prairie. So semi-autonomous means that it is a Toyota minivan capable of self-driving. So it's got radar and LiDAR and capable of doing it, but for the entire three years, we'll have an operator. Because there are things that just aren't worked out with autonomous yet, like what happens if there's an accident? Does the Toyota minivan make a call? And those are the kind of things that still need to be worked out. So just for the city of Eden Prairie, it'll be the first in the metro area. And it's, I think it's kind of great that Southwest Transit is leading some, some technology initiative there.
Thank you.
That's it.
I had a charger that we could have shared.
I know.
Reed?
So I have a lot. We went to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, the mayor and Vicky, I, from our staff. It was a great conference. I appreciate the city for sending me. It's amazing. No matter how big or small your city are, you seem to have the same problems, so it's good to talk with other people and get networking. You know, they had different information sessions. I attended one on housing, an energy program, one on cybersecurity, and then one just dealing with difficult situations. So I fed some of my learnings back to the staff, and yeah, it was great. I, I really appreciate sending me, so thanks a lot.
The HPC meeting for next week is canceled for no lack of, or, excuse me, for lack of business. And then everyone obviously is giving their shout-outs to the hard work that's happened. Reed, we don't feel the same way. I, living downtown, I get a firsthand view of exactly how much they are down here and working. And of course, the council and everyone else has been down there, but it's really, it was really, when you say a team-building exercise, to live down here and to see the constant movement and the constant group of public services and our emergency management at all times. It was so amazing to watch. So again, we've said it, we said it through the work session, we'll say it now, but great job to everybody, including office staff and Brent and Erin and just everybody who helped out. And the attorneys who are, you know, texting back on the weekends and engineers who are here working outside of hours. So it's, it was just so neat to watch on such a precarious situation. I don't wanna take the, you know, I don't wanna take away from the seriousness of it, but it was, it was great to see how everything came together and really see it firsthand, day after day, in and out, living down here. That's all I have.
Just, as the council's going around, I thought, I just wanted to recognize too, I know we put out some stuff on thinking the county and the sheriff's office and William Mueller, but just wanna recognize both Chaska and Chan has offered facilities in case we needed to do an evacuation. The Red Cross was on standby and Southwest Transit was on standby to provide emergency transportation. So those are things that we don't talk about and we hope we don't have to implement. But when, kind of what council member Pritchman said, when you need a friend and those friends step up, it's a really good feeling. So thank you to Chaska and Chan and the county and Southwest Transit for being there when we needed them to be there, even though we didn't need them in some ways.
Really great partners, though, in a lot of what we do and, you know, the meetings that we're at where we see people quite regularly. You know, we got, I received calls from Representative Harter, Senator Kruenhagen. We had the two state senators here, like, just that relationship building, like, when rubber hits the road, you know, like, when we need help, and it's just so appreciated. Let's see, quick updates from me. On June nineteenth, I had coffee with Leon Lido from the Realtors Association. She was kind of lets me know what the housing outlook for existing homes looks like in our area continues to go up. Residential, like, median days on the market, average price all appear to be strong despite interest rates that are a little bit higher than they've been. We had the Cover Business Alliance on the twenty-first. On the twenty-second, the Cover County Sheriff's Office had their open house, which was their first one maybe ever, if not in a while, which was just kind of cool to go there and get tours. Then kind of after that, things really started to pick up. Last Sunday on the twenty-third, we had Senators Klobuchar and Smith out here to visit. They were both fantastic. Senator Klobuchar's picture is downstairs from twenty-eleven, standing on the levy with former Mayor, Mayor Osterdahl, when we raised the levy up. So she had been here before. I'm not sure that Senator Smith had it. She definitely loved Carver. She remembered about how charming it was and how lovely it was. Oh, and huge hat tip to Christie for, Christie and Brent and Paul and Tim and Callie and the Royces for, at very, very, very little notice, saying, yeah, let's meet downtown at ten AM on a Sunday morning and let's walk through downtown and let's show these senators what we have, what we're doing, what we're prepared for and what we need. So that was fantastic. On the twenty-fourth, Parker Nelson from Congressman, Congressman Emmer's office came to visit. So same thing, kind of almost the exact same route that we took on Sunday, I took with him on Monday, showing him the levy, showing him what we had done. The levy was still open at that point, so we went all the way down to Riverside Park, because I think that tells a strong part of our story, too.
Was the street bridge closed off at that point?
Yep.
Okay.
But maybe not with water on it.
Okay.
Yet. You know, a side note, like, as you take a look at the river levels, where it is tonight is roughly where it was last Tuesday when we had our special meeting. Roughly. And like, doesn't this feel different?
It's good.
We're all like, woo! I don't want this to be, you know, the mission accomplished moment, because I wanna acknowledge that there are probably still a lot, a lot of folks who are dealing with water in their basements and, you know, potentially damage. But I think I walked the levy with our crews a number of times over the weekend, and it was just fantastic to see the teamwork, the collaboration, just the backyard engineering that was taking place of like, yep, should we try this? Sure, let's see if it works, you know, the firefighters who came down to load up sandbags in the bucket brigade at ten thirty on a school night. Just so, so proud of everybody who participated, and I hate thanking people because you inevitably leave somebody off, but certainly everybody in this room definitely played a role. Let's see, continuing down on my list, on the twenty-fifth, after our meeting here, I boogied down to Rochester where I interviewed for the League of Minnesota Cities Executive Board. You guys probably know that I've served on the league board for the last year, but I interviewed for, and am now the second VP on the League of Minnesota Cities Board, so. Excited about that.
What does that get us?
It gets us Brent snappy.
You know, I'm glad you asked. How it helped Carver is Governor Walz came to the conference on Thursday. You were teaming me up for that, weren't you?
Teamwork.
And the executive committee got to meet with him. So instead of having, you know, a couple dozen people meet with him when he came, it was four of us and two, maybe two, three, four staff members. And I was able to get his ear for thirty seconds and talk about the flooding in Carver, and he talked about the FEMA reimbursement. So that was fantastic, and it's that kind of opportunity that hopefully that's what this continues to get us. Let's see, mayor's office hours, I did impromptu mayor's office hours last, yesterday, because after coming back from the conference and knowing what was going on down here, I just wanted to make sure that I was available for folks in case they were maybe feeling some of the anxiety that I've been feeling for the last week. Couple other things, tonight on the consent agenda, we appointed election judges for the August primary. As you can see in the documentation, that's included in that appointment. They're not paid a lot, but it, and it's hard work and it's really long hours and it's a lot of city staff who works really hard on that. So I just wanna thank everybody who volunteers to work that. And then, yeah, that is it for me. Thank you all, thank everybody, like, enjoy the Fourth of July, take Friday, like, we've all, we all have worked really, really hard in the last two weeks plus, always, but exceptionally in the last couple of weeks, so. All right, with that, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rock and a second by Councilmember Welsh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion passes, good evening.
Yeah, good job, Bond. Like you say, you didn't go to law school to write chicken order instances. You know, it's just, you know, my feedback.